Start recording. Letting everyone in.
I'm down to fifty-five, I'm fine.
People are loading in.
You got twenty-three in the waiting room?
Few more people loading in.
They're all pushing through the doors.
Pushing through those virtual doors. All right, I think we can get started.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chaz, do you want to move into a, change it from webinar?
We give it a couple more minutes because it's now three o'clock, so some people will log in.
All right, we ready to start? Thumbs up, Chaz?
Yep, you're good.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Boca Chambers Economic Development Committee meeting for the month of July. I hope everyone is healthy, safe, and avoiding the really hot weather that we've been experiencing here in the summer in South Florida. We have a very special speaker today. Vice Mayor Robert Weinroth has joined us today to talk about some pretty critical issues in our current world that we're facing and give us some insight perhaps on to where we might be going from here now four months into this coronavirus situation. My name is Troy McClellan, I'm the President and CEO of the Boca Chamber. I'm joined by the Chair of our Economic Development Committee, Constance Scott, who is with us as well. Madam Chair, thank you for your leadership on this committee and for all you do for the Chamber, for FAU, and for the community of Boca Raton. We appreciate that. Before I come back and give a proper introduction to Vice Mayor Weinroth, I'm going to turn it back over to Chastity, who will give you just some of the ground rules about what we're going to do for the next fifty to sixty minutes or so. Chaz?
Thanks, boss. Welcome, everyone. Just to let you know that we are going to be recording. Well, actually, this presentation is already in recording so that you can be able to see a copy of this presentation in our YouTube channel on our Events and Resources playlist. We are actually waiting a few more minutes for some other people to come on, and you will probably get a slight little message pop up on your window that states that the host has asked you to join as a panelist because we're going to move everybody into this one space here. That ways we can have an interactive presentation. I would advise everybody to please keep your mics on mute during the presentation. And if you can, if you're going to be moving around your space, please keep your cameras off because sometimes they can be a little distracting during the session. If you have any questions, you will be able to put them in the chat box shortly, and you can direct them to either Troy, or you can direct them into everyone. If you want everyone to see the questions, we will monitor those, and they will be asked towards the end of the presentation. Enjoy.
Thank you, Chastity. Now, we're going to get right into it. I'm going to read an abbreviated version of Vice Mayor Weinroth's bio. It's a very long document, but in the interest of time, I'll shorten it a bit. But, and then I'll add some more personal comments at the end. But, Robert Weinroth was elected to the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, representing District Four in 2018, and was recently elected by his fellow board members as Vice Mayor. He's a longtime resident of Boca Raton with an extensive background in business, public service, and community involvement, as many of you know, Robert. In 2014, Vice Mayor Weinroth was elected to the Boca Raton City Council, where he served as Deputy Mayor and CRA Vice Chair during his four-year tenure. In tandem with his service on city councils, appointed to a number of Palm Beach County boards, including the Boca Raton Airport Authority, which he did a great job for us, Palm Tram Service Board, Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, and the Treasure Coast Planning Council. In addition, he was elected to the Board of the Palm Beach County League of Cities and the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. In addition to his wide-range involvement with local nonprofits, Vice Mayor Weinroth takes great pride in his past work as a volunteer with the Guardian Athlatom Program in the Fifteenth Judicial Circuit, advocating on behalf of abused, abandoned, and neglected children deemed dependent by the court. We appreciate that service. Over the years, Vice Mayor Weinroth was elected President for several homeowners' associations in Boca Raton and served on the boards of two area synagogues, including Abenai Torah Congregation. Vice Mayor Weinroth brings to his public service a broad background as an executive and general counsel in insurance, finance, and healthcare industries. Most recently, he was President and General Counsel at Freedom Medical Services, working with his wife and partner Pamela for sixteen years. He obtained his undergraduate degree at Northeastern University and a Juris Doctor at New England School of Law, and he's a member of the Florida Massachusetts and New Jersey bars. Currently, Vice Mayor Weinroth serves on the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, Value Adjustment Board, Multi-Jurisdictional Issues Coordination Forum, Education Commission, and Palm Beach Broadband. He also serves on the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Florida Hate Crime Coalition, and the Florida Metropolitan Planning Organization Advisory Council. In addition, he serves on the National Association of Counties Transportation Steering Committee and is Vice Chair of the Transit Rail Subcommittee. He is married to his wife Pamela and is the father of four boys in their blended family. So that's sort of the written piece. I'd like to add some of my own personal comments. And for the record, as many of you know, the Chambers Political Action Committee, Blue Pack, endorsed Robert in his races throughout. Robert's been a great friend to this organization and someone who completely understands what a Chamber of Commerce does. He understands what our mission is. And as an elected official, he has been a great voice and a great advocate for business, for overall economic development and community development. I know Robert has developed great relationships with almost everyone on the Chamber team, and we very much appreciate that. Now that we're in this new crazy world of ours, you know, we, everything we expected of Vice Mayor Weinroth, he has delivered and more. He has been put, along with his colleagues, in a very difficult situation to try to lead. And we always expect our elected officials to lead, and Vice Mayor Weinroth has done just that. He's done that with a balanced approach, understanding the economic crisis, understanding the healthcare crisis, and trying to come up with solutions that is accommodating both of those very significant and delicate challenges. And so, I know I speak on behalf of my board, of the team here, that we can appreciate Vice Mayor Weinroth's leadership and commitment and compassion to the world we're living in right now and making decisions that, quite frankly, we might be lucky we're not sitting in that hot seat. As it, as sometimes, it doesn't make everybody happy, no matter where they stand. So, with that introduction, Vice Mayor Weinroth, again, we want to welcome you to this committee meeting today. Always a pleasure to have you with us and to chat with you. And we always leave a little bit more informed after we've talked to you than before the meeting started. So, thank you very much for your time today, and I want to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Troy, and I appreciate it. You make me blush as I listen to you today. And I guess we're out of time now, so I have to do something about truncating that biography a little bit. But I smile, especially when I heard you talking about my service on the Airport Authority, since we both know that you were not really charmed with the idea of me self-appointed myself onto that board a few years ago. But as I heard, you-
You won me over.
You, I won you over, so I'm glad to hear. Anyway, it is my pleasure to be here again today. I am very, very honored to be representing the District Four, which encompasses Boca Raton, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Lantana, Ocean Ridge. I go right up the coast up to South Palm Beach. It's an interesting district. And of course, even though I'm just elected by District Four, I'm responsible for voting on decisions having to do with the entire county. So, we don't get to take a pass just because something's happening out in the Glades or up in Jupiter. And so, you really have to be, you know, nimble, as my good friend, former Deputy Mayor Constance Scott would say. You know, we have to be nimble when we're in these seats, and you've got to be able to switch from one subject to another. And as much as I thought the responsibilities on the city council were, you know, kept us on our toes, I can tell you on the county level, it is certainly a lot more onerous. And as you said, Troy, ever since the pandemic started, people have all of a sudden gotten very interested in those office holders down ticket. I'll just do a PSA, since as you know, we're in the middle of a primary season. And in fact, if you've asked for your vote-by-mail ballot, you probably have already received it. And if you have not asked for your vote-by-mail ballot, I would encourage you very strongly to think about getting it. You have several more weeks until you can ask for that. I think August eighth is actually the last day that they will accept a request that they mail it to you. You can always walk into the SOE's office and pick one up. But I've got to tell you, this is a very important election, not only because of, of course, what's going on at the top of the ticket, the President and the Members of Congress, but also those down-ticket races. As people have learned, the fact is that the County Commission has gotten very, very involved in day-to-day planning within the county. And I think that people are now more focused on what's happening at the County Commission. So, just for your own information, we do have, my seat is not up. I'm in the even seat, so that means that I will be up in two years. This year, it's the odd seat, the Seat Five, which is west of the Turnpike. And so, anybody who lives out there, you have two people running. You have the former Senator Maria Sacks, and you have an attorney by the name of Shiner who is running. There will be no primary, that will only be on the general election in November. But please, that there are judicial races. There are two seats on the Greater Beach and Parks District. And so, there are reasons that you should be learning who the candidates are. And again, I would encourage you to get a vote-by-mail ballot, not only because of the health issues, and certainly, we'll talk about that in a moment, but, and some of the poll workers did wind up getting the virus during the municipal elections. So, it certainly behooves you to be safe. And notwithstanding the old wives' tale that people don't open up the vote-by-mails until they see if it's going to be a tight race. The vote-by-mails are opened up early, they are counted. And in fact, if you are like me and you're watching the results on election night, those are the results that come out first. So, by seven-thirty at night, you'll see the results that are being posted by the TV channels. And those results will say zero precincts have reported. And because those are the early voters, and they are the vote-by-mailers. Another reason why you should consider vote-by-mail is they'll be probably moving precincts around. There are some precincts that have asked not to be voter locations because of the health considerations. There are also situations where people are not willing to be poll workers because they're concerned about their health. And a lot of our more mature residents have tended to be our poll workers. So, for that reason, and, and just for the ability to sit down and look at the ballot and make a decision in the comfort of your own home, the county is paying postage, there's no excuse for not sending it in. And in fact, you can go online to make sure that your ballot has been received by the supervisor of election. So, there's no reason not to vote, and there's certainly no reason not to vote by mail. That's the end of my PSA. Now, let's talk a little bit about the pandemic. As I said at the outset, this has really changed the way that we govern, frankly. You know, when I got here, one of the things that they handed me was the Emergency Operations Manual. And it won't surprise you that the predominant focus of that manual was how do we handle hurricanes? How do we handle wind events? How do we handle a dike breach? And very little attention was really spent, although it was mentioned, on a pandemic. And as we know, this pandemic is not the typical emergency. When we were on city council, you know, you would prepare for the event, you would hunker down and let it pass, and then you would recuperate. You would get the, you know, FPL would come in, put the lines back up. We'd have food lines, we'd have ice lines. People would, you know, get their electricity back and hopefully didn't have too much damage. The companies would get back up and running within a week or so, and we would say, all right, we got through that one. This pandemic is just an animal unto itself. We are over a hundred days in an emergency order here within Palm Beach County. And what that means is, our Emergency Operations Center has been activated since back in March. And our county administrator, who doubles as the incoming commander, has been paying a lot of attention to the pandemic, has been spending a lot of time with the pandemic. And a lot of our staff is spending, probably half their time partially doing what is their normal activities within the county and partially doing what they have to do because of the pandemic. It's really taxing our resources. And I've got to tell you, this is really something, when it's over, and I know it's going to be over someday, hopefully before I'm out of office. But when it's over, we're really going to sit down and have a postmortem and just take a look at this and see what we could have done better. And we know that we've made some mistakes. And we know that, you know, as we've gone through this, we're, we're building, you know, the procedures. And, you know, we, we've gotten a lot of cooperation, of course, from the Chamber, from the municipal governments, and from our stakeholders. And it's important, because this has been a very, very difficult period. Just to catch you up on where we are as of today, I took a look at the dashboard. And as of today, we've had twenty-seven thousand of our residents test positive for the virus. Now, I'm going to immediately say, that's not a number that has really been as important to me as some of the other metrics that we've been following. And one of the more important metrics here has been the percentage of positives. Because as we've opened up more and more of the test centers, and of course, you know, we have one at FAU, we have one at the South County Civic Center, and they're sprinkled all around the county. But as we've opened more, and as people have been more and more concerned about this pandemic, they've made themselves available for testing. And not only once, more than once, people have gone and been repeatedly testing because, of course, it's a point-in-time test. Just because I go in on Monday, and I get my results later, and they say I don't have the virus, doesn't mean a week later, I may not have had the virus. So, people are getting repeated tests because they're free and because they're concerned. And then, when people do test positive, they're told they should not return to their normal activities until they don't test positive twice in a row. So, that means now, they're going back in and testing several times until they finally get two negatives in a row. So, for that reason alone, the total number of positives, I've always felt, is not necessarily a number that I'm really comfortable with. And, you know, I've had some conversations with Dr. Alina Alonso, who is our representative to the Florida Department of Health. And she comes to our meetings on a regular basis and gives us a recap. The number that I look at again is the overall percentage positive. And right now, it's not a number to be happy with, because it's twelve-point-three percent. That's twelve-point-three percent since we started. It's a little bit less when you look at it for the last, though, I guess it's six weeks. It's running a little bit closer to ten percent. I think it's, looking at my numbers, it's eleven-point-nine percent. So, it's not where we want to be. We had set ten percent as a number where we were aiming to stay under. That number has come down over the last few days. And we're hopeful that with the things that we're doing, with the mask order that was put in place a few weeks ago, with the decision to ask, tell restaurants that they have to close at eleven o'clock, and they can't reopen until five o'clock, that we're going to eliminate a lot of what was, unfortunately, situation where there was some partying going on. And to be honest, there are a lot of our residents who feel invincible. I mean, there's, there's a segment of our population who feels we shouldn't be telling them how to, you know, run their lives, that they're, they should be able to mask or unmask as they see fit. This is a healthcare crisis, and we've made the decision that mandating the masks indoors where it's tight quarters and outdoors where you can't socially distance is a way that we can help push these numbers down. And we've always been talking about flattening the curve. We've always talked about not necessarily stopping the virus, because we already know that absent either herd immunity or vaccinations, and vaccinations can't happen until we have an approved vaccine. But until that happens, this virus is going to be in the background. So, we've just been trying to flatten the curve. We have done a good job of that. Again, to give you some numbers, we have capacity in our hospitals, in our ICUs. The ICUs have about twenty percent of the people that are in the ICUs are there because of the COVID-19. People there for other reasons, for trauma, for accidents, for illnesses, for elective surgeries. And so, you know, this is one segment of it. Some of our hospitals are getting very close to maximum. And as a result of that, the Baptist system has suspended elective surgeries if it requires an overnight. So, the, the situation at Boca Regional and up in Boynton, at the, at the two hospitals there, East and West, they've, Bethesda, they, they are holding off on their, their elective surgeries if it needs to have an overnight stay. As I said, we not happy that we're sitting at, you know, eleven percent. It's, it's not where we want to be. We're going to try and keep working to push this number down, flattening the curve. Dade County is really the epicenter of the, the issue. And every time we've had to respond to what's going on in the South, whether it's Dade, Miami-Dade, or Broward, you know, our residents get really annoyed. The reason why we had to shut the beaches down, both Memorial Day, no, we didn't shut down Memorial Day. We opened the Memorial Day, but we shut down Independence Day weekend, was because when they closed the beaches to our South, we were deathly afraid that they were just going to migrate north, and it would be uncontrollable. And certainly Boca Raton, which is on the southernmost part of Palm Beach County, was the one that was most concerned about that potential influx. And so, that's why we closed down the beaches. But Miami-Dade, right now, has a seventeen percent positivity rate since the beginning of the pandemic. When you just take a look at the last six weeks, it's actually higher. It's running closer to twenty percent. So, Miami-Dade has a significant problem, and that's why they put into place a curfew. And we up here in Boca, in Boca and Palm Beach County are not considering a curfew. We feel that that would be harmful to our residents, our stakeholders, our businesses. It pains us to have to tell the businesses, especially the restaurants, that they have to close at eleven. But we're doing that out of an abundance of caution so that, again, the people who are partying won't have a place to go to. Interestingly, the average patient age right now is forty-one years old. That means, you know, you're talking about between twenty and probably fifty as a, basically, a range. The older population, the octogenarians, are not where a predominant number of the COVID cases are. But that's the good news, because we tend to tolerate it better. And that's why the mortality has not gone up. The mortality has stayed flat or even gone down over the last month, notwithstanding these very high numbers. And you heard, you know, when we hit fifteen thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine, everybody heard that number. But even when that number hit, and of course, the deaths and the ICU usage is a lagging indicator. So, we were watching that since when that hit in, around Independence Day, and we're still not seeing a real jump in the mortality or in the, in the ICU. So, I think it's a, it's a matter of our medical personnel are getting better at handling the patients. And I think it's because we're winding up with patients who are more tolerant of the virus. Not to say that there may not be long-term implications. And we are still hearing potential implications, even for the young children who get it and may or not, may not even know that they've had it. They may have been asymptomatic. But they've been doing some studies and taking some X-rays of the lungs of those children, and they are seeing changes in the tissue in their lungs. So, this is not something to be just poo-pooed at. There's not something to be said, well, you know, I'm, I'm strong and healthy, and this isn't going to bother me. Some people, it hasn't been a big problem for. You've probably heard that our state attorney has the virus, and he's tolerating it well. You may not have heard that the former mayor, Delray, has gotten the virus, and he is terribly sick. He has been in ICU, and this has been very difficult for him to tolerate. So, it doesn't matter what your age, you know, it may be, you know, you may have a pre-existing condition, whether you're diabetic, maybe, maybe you, you have a condition like me. And, you know, the fact is, you don't want to take a chance. Please, wear the mask when you are out and about where you can't social distance. All of the supermarkets now, even, you know, Publix has said that, you know, you have to wear it. And it really is, it's a matter of courtesy. And I say from the dais all the time, it's, it's really a matter of being good to your neighbors. And if, if you put on the mask, you're not necessarily helping yourself, although, you know, obviously, if someone spits in your face accidentally while they're talking to you, you have a mask on, you're protected from that. But you're really protecting the people around you. And, you know, kindness matters. We've heard that over and over again. We have a nonprofit in our, in our community that is, is called Kindness Matters. And really, please, be kind and, and wear the mask when you are in a place where you could infect someone, or stay six feet apart. As I said, data capture is, is really been frustrating. We, we get a lot of numbers, and as you can imagine, these numbers are coming in from all different sources. You know, there's a lot of testing sites. And we just need to be sure that the numbers we're using to drive this bus are accurate so we, we have a better idea of how we're doing. Let me segue to schools for a second. While the Board of County Commissioners certainly does not make decisions on schools, and I've had to explain that over and over again to my constituents, as you know, the Board, the School Board has made the decision for the near term that they are going to be doing virtual schooling. It's just not, in their, in their mind, it's not safe to bring the children back at this point. And in fact, today, I was, I saw that they are going to delay the beginning of school till the end of August. So, I'm, you know, as bad as it's been to be on the County Commission and dealing with the issues that we are saddled with, I've got to tell you, I, I, I think of Frank Barbieri and what he has to do, and, and really, the challenges of trying to bring a school system back up after being closed down now for basically the better part of a semester last year, and we're walking into another year. It's, it's very difficult. We all understand that our children need to be educated. We don't want them to lose their ability to learn and be competitive and be, you know, eventually, in the, in the workforce as people who are able to carry- and be, you know, eventually in the, in the workforce as people who are able to carry their weight. But on the other hand, we don't want to be infecting them and we don't want them carrying it home. So as I said, I, I think of Frank all the time about what they're going through and, and happy where I am. One of the things that the county is working on with the school board is broadband. Broadband is really something that we have all recognized. Right now, we're on the Zoom call. We have changed the dynamic of business meetings and we've changed the dynamic of education. And I don't think that that's going to change just because the virus is over. I think a lot of people are going to say, you know what? There is no reason that I have to have all my employees at the office. They can be doing their work from a, another site. And maybe they come in once a week for a team meeting or a couple of times a week. And schools and universities, I think, are also going to look at this new model and determine whether there's opportunities to have a hybrid of in-class training and also have the distance learning. Now, what does that mean? That means if you don't have broadband, you are going to be at a disadvantage. And we are working to eliminate that disparity. We have communities where children do not have access to the internet. They don't have a laptop. They don't have the ability to get online. Or if they have a laptop and there are four children in the house, they're all fighting over getting access to the laptop. Or there's not enough broadband to basically have two or three people on the internet at the same time. The bandwidth just is not there. So we as a county are working very hard to increase the bandwidth and the accessibility of broadband all throughout the county. And what we're doing is there are 61 sites that we are working with the school board on where we are going to enhance the broadband so that you would be able to go to any one of the schools where the, there's a tower and there's a, there's a ability to get the broadband from inside. And it'll be turned up so that you will be able to just drive up to the school. Maybe sit in the parking lot, maybe sit outside the school, maybe sit on the grass outside the school. And you'll be able to access the broadband and do your lessons or do whatever you need to do on the internet. We realize that without making broadband available to every family, every student, there's going to be a terrible disparity between the educational opportunities that are afforded to children in households where it's available and those households where it's not. So this is a, an imperative for us right now. We are working with the school district. We have money. We're taking $10 million from the, the monies that we've gotten, the 261 million that we've got in CARES Act monies. And we are dedicating it to enhancement of broadband in the county. So while I'm on the subject of talking about the CARES Act, let me tell you a little bit about what we've been doing with the money from the CARES Act. As I said, we got 261 million from the CARES Act. 60 million of that was earmarked for the recovery of businesses affected by the executive orders that were enacted by the state and the county. And by that, I mean, if we said you had to close, then you're impacted. Now, there are some businesses that feel that they were impacted, but they weren't closed by us. And they weren't necessarily going to be qualifying for the, the money that we had available. But the county staff expedited the implementation of the board's direction. And they took that money and the restart business grant program. And they opened up an application portal back in May, May 22nd. And we had already received 1,900 applications by the first day. And we have been working through those. And we have basically been using the financials of the companies. And they can get a grant up to $25,000 from the county. And we, we offset that by what they may have gotten in their PPP. So if they did get money from the, the CARES Act directly in the PPP, then we offset that. But we've made grants of already $40 million. And that's been dispersed to 2,300 businesses throughout the county. I'm happy to say the first business that got the money was right here in Boca Raton. We're still going through those applications. We're not taking applications anymore. We closed that down on July 17th. But if we wind up that we have some more money, then we may open it up or we may rededicate it to other sources. We're also, of course, working with the chambers and with the communications groups to send out messages about what the county is doing, how they're helping out, making available loans to help companies get back on their feet. And we recognize what we've done between the state and the county in reducing hours, reducing the, the, the number of people that can be in those, those venues that is making it very difficult for these businesses. And I, for one, have always been adamant that we can't just focus on keeping people healthy. That if we can't keep the economy healthy, then there's going to be very little to go back to once we've beaten the pandemic. So we're balancing health and the economy and trying to make sure that at the end of the day, we're protecting, of course, the elderly, the immune suppressed, those people who should be protecting themselves and self-isolating, but also making sure that we are protecting our business community. Let me see, what else do I have here? I'll go off that for a second. Let me talk to you about budget for a second. Through all of this, we have to do a budget. And as you can imagine, we have been seriously impacted by the pandemic. Not so much at the county level as at the state level. And at the county, it's been more the bed tax because of course, people are not going to the, the hotels. And as a result, the, the numbers from the bed tax have gone way down. And so we've had to re, reorganize some of our projects that we were going to do with the bed tax money. But as far as the county, as far as going forward with our, our operations, we are really using property tax money as a primary source of revenue for the, for the county. And 70% of the county's property taxes come from residential properties. So residential properties remarkably has done very well during this period. And in fact, some would say they've actually done better because there are people that are looking to get the hell out of Dodge up north. And they would like to be down here. And we were already seeing the benefits of the IRS changes where they changed the deductibility on, on taxes and mortgage interest up north. And it was making people decide that living down here where taxes were lower and it was certainly a, a great place to live, work and play. This was where they wanted to be. But the pandemic seems to be accelerating that. On the flip side of that, I think that we're going to see a lot of, again, businesses repurposing their, their space, making decisions whether they need to have as much space because if they don't need the employees be coming in every day, they can take smaller footprint. And I think you're going to see this affect our commercial leasing over the next year or so. And I think you're also going to see the, the restaurants, obviously have been heavily impacted by this. We've heard, of course, retailers going out of business. We've heard of restaurants going out of business. It's going to be impacted. So when we got to the budget this year, we made the decision, number one, we were going to take two issues and put them before the voters to have a, a, a bond issue, to deal with housing, both workforce housing, affordable housing and homelessness. That was going to be $150 million ask. And then there was going to be $150 million ask for a bond issue that would have been for environmental issues. Both of those were taken off the table. We recognize this was not the time to ask the voters for the, the additional money that they'd have to pay to service those debts. We did make the decision that the millage will not go up. The millage will stay at 4.7815. That's the maximum millage. It could possibly go down. I doubt it will because we have to really strengthen our reserves because we know next year. And when we, again, the values for this year, as you probably know, were set as of January 1st, 2020. So the value adjustment board has had all their hearings, all that's behind us. We have a tax rate based upon the ratables. In '21, we are expecting those numbers to start going soft on us. And so, again, we don't want to be in a position to have to ask for an increase in millage. We want to be able to stay stable. So it's going to be important for us to keep the, the, the reserves as, as high as we can keep them. One of the things you may or may not know is almost half of the county's budget goes towards public safety. So our, our sheriff, Rick Bradshaw, who happens to be up for reelection, is coming to us with a budget that has a small increase on it. And he and our county administrator, Virginia Baker, have agreed that he has really pared it back as much as he can and still be effective. Now, there is something on the table right now, which you may hear about in the next few weeks. And that's the potential of body cameras for the sheriff's department. In Boca Raton, we made the decision a couple of years ago to go ahead and put body cameras on the police officers. So in Boca Raton, the, the, the body cams are already implemented. But for the sheriff's deputies to go ahead and implement it, and it's not just buying the, the cameras, and the cameras usually look like an iPhone. They just sit on the, the officer's chest or the sheriff's deputy's chest. But the real issue is taking all that information, putting it into our servers, being able to index it and then being able to respond to all the requests for copies of that when there's an issue. So the, the tab on that is $19 million. And we are working with the sheriff. And while we haven't had a hearing on it, we're having some discussions with them offline. And you'll probably hear more about this in the next few weeks, that we're going to try and see how we can use some of the infrastructure tax money that we are getting already and dedicate it towards the, the, the body cam. So that's what's going on with that. From, you know, from where I sit, it certainly has been a challenge. From a, a perspective of how it affects my job, for the most part, you know, and, and, and Constance probably can remember back to her days as a deputy mayor and a council member. You know, when you have people come into you, they usually are a small cross-section of the, of your stakeholders. They don't want a certain development or they do want a development or they want a light or they want some issue. But it tends to be a small portion of your stakeholders. I, I remember being at the council chambers when we were talking about things like wildflower. And, you know, you'd fill up the council chambers and, you know, even the ante room besides, but you were talking about maybe 500 people. Well, take that now and think about the pandemic. We have a million five people in our county and the pandemic affects every single one of them. So every single time we make a decision, whether it's to close restaurants at 11 o'clock, whether it's to require masks being worn or anything that smacks of a change in the way people are doing business. You can't believe the number of emails I get. You can't believe the number of phone calls I get. I am, you know, when I was at the city council, we had one executive assistant or administrative assistant that kept an eye on four of us, the four members of the city council. And the mayor had his or her own administrative assistant. And the count on the commission, I have three people who are basically backing me up and making me look good. And they are constantly responding to constituent inquiries. And most of them right now, since March, have been having to do with the impacts of the pandemic. How it's affecting their work, how it's affecting their health, how it's affecting things that they're doing, things, school, whatever. So, I mean, this has really been a challenge. And I've got to tell you, I can't wait for the day when we've all gotten our injections and the pandemic is just, you know, a footnote. And I can take my, my little diaper here and put it away for safekeeping. So I think on that note, I'm going to tie it up. I'm sure the, the members have some questions and I'd be very happy to answer them.
Well, Vice Mayor, thank you very much. That was a, that was an excellent recap of kind of where, where we've been, where we are. Maybe a little bit of insight into the future, which is there's still a ton of uncertainty. I did want to make a comment. You, early on, you said, I hope this is over by the time I leave office. Well, we expect you to get reelected, so this better be over by the time you leave office. That's a long time from now. But we're with you on that. And then you mentioned Chairman Barbieri. Yeah, he certainly is going through a difficult time, as are his colleagues on the school board. Again, trying to balance the, the impact of the economy and, and, and the health aspect of, of this, this virus. It's, it's challenging for sure. I'm going to start and ask the first question. And if, if some come in through the chat box or the, the Q and A, we can get to them. We've, we've got about 15 more minutes or so, but.
Yeah, I want to get back on the beach, Troy.
I know, that's, I, I want to be there with you. I think, you know, you, you, you addressed this a little bit. And what we've seen throughout this crisis is sort of the, the actions of our counties to the South and how that impacts the next county up. And you mentioned the beach situation, again, a difficult decision to make. You know, you represent Boca as, as the border community to Broward. Broward makes a policy decision that impacts not all of Palm Beach County perhaps, but certainly the district you serve in, and that would be Boca Raton, Del Rey Beach, et cetera. You know, on the east side, that's an example. You know, now with, you know, Broward imposing a curfew, you had mentioned that, that Palm Beach County, you know, not yet ready to do that just because of the restrictions it has on everybody. So I guess without a curfew from a, from a resident standpoint, that doesn't restrict them. But, but do you think that the, that the decision on closing those restaurants or venues that, that could have turned into the bar nightclub scenes at 11, that's almost, it's kind of a quasi-curfew, at least in that particular activity?
Look, I don't disagree with you at all, Troy. I was not a real advocate for that. But I, I recognize the real problem, and most of our restaurants, as you know, close by 11. What was happening, especially up in West Palm Beach, along Clematis, is that these restaurants are closing and then they're opening up as nightclubs.
Right.
And even though the bars are not supposed to be open, they were opening up and these were very tight spaces, people that were not socially distanced. They were not wearing masks. And as I said, you take a look at the, 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 the way that this virus has now moved into an age group of average 41. What we've done is we've basically taken those invincible teenagers and, you know, millennials. And they're saying, well, it's, it's not my problem. You know, grandma and grandpa are home. You know, I'm not going to go visit them, so I'm not infecting them. It's, it's a matter of trying to balance. And I don't want to even think of the necessity for a curfew. I hate the idea that we had to shut the restaurants down at 11 because originally the order was last call at 11 and, you know, you could stay up or stay open until 12. Well, don't you know what happened? They, at about quarter to 11, they would say, all right, order up a dozen drinks and we'll give you munchies for, you know, the next couple of hours. So, you know, people need to take a certain amount of responsibility for themselves. And again, kindness matters. If people would just do the right. If people would just do the right thing, government would not have to be looking over your shoulder. And I am all for allowing people to make their own decisions. We allow them to make their own decisions about smoking. We allow them to make their own decisions on a lot of things that may not be healthy. But this is a situation where there are unintended consequences that people are now transmitting this and creating a problem, not only for the people who are getting sick, but for the healthcare workers who are now stressed for the fact that they don't have the PPE, that they are maxed out in their services. And it's just a matter of making sure that, remember what I said beginning, we have to keep this curve flattened. I would love to have, in the back in March, said, everybody go outside, get a group hug, let's get this thing over with in four weeks and we're done. And we know that we've been a lot of dead people and the hospitals would have been maxed out and we just couldn't do that. So this is the way it's got to be handled.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, there's there's a question here about gyms, you know, fitness centers and masks and requiring the fitness centers to to use masks, that you can't properly social distance, or if they just don't have the space in their in their facility to keep the the machines apart. Thoughts on that?
Well, let me tell you my personal view of that. My personal view is I can't understand why someone would want to be in a fitness area where people are breathing heavy, exhaling and inhaling heavily, and we know the virus is there somewhere. And so it's not a great situation telling people to wear a mask when they're exercising. And in fact, I'm not quite sure if that's really our requirement. I think, you know, there in situations of exercising, I don't think you have to wear a mask. But let's be honest, if you're going to be, and, you know, we here, I live in Seasons, we have this small fitness room and, you know, the 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 circulation is eh, and you have three or four people on machines, and even if they're distanced, you're breathing each other's air. So you're trying to be healthy, you're trying to do the right thing by, you know, getting on that machine and and feeling good about yourself. And if that's just going to make you get infected, it just doesn't make sense. You know, I don't know what the the best answer for this, other than bringing the equipment home and and, you know, being in your own in your own location. Unfortunately, this is not something, I mean, I'm not a a doctor or a scientist, but to me, it makes no sense being in a place where people are really just exhaling and inhaling with such gusto that you know the air is out there.
Right, yeah. There's a question here about about masks being mailed out to, and and how's, how does it work and and how, who pays for it, I guess?
Okay, well, this was a decision that was made by the county administrator. And while I don't generally distance myself from them, and I won't in this case, it's maybe, I'm not quite sure, the best decision because most people have their little masks already. You know, if you're going to have a mask, you have your mask. On the other hand, I think that it's a good way of making sure that you're putting this in front of people's attention. They're going to get two fabric and two paper masks. There's going to be some propaganda in there too, talking about what you need to be doing to protect yourself from COVID, you know, six feet apart and, you know, the hygiene and all that. The money is coming from the CARES Act. So it's not coming out of the money from our our taxation. Could it have been used in another way? Perhaps. But one of the things about the CARES Act money is we must spend it by December 31st. So now that we're trying to spend it frivolously, but on the other hand, we can't just sit on it and say, you know what, let's hold it back until next year because we know things are going to come up. I think that, you know, it's going to go out to this about 630 residential addresses. It's from what I understand, they're starting to go out this week and probably people are going to start seeing them. It's just another way of, it's it's like a PSA. It's like getting, you know, one of these brochures from one of the candidates who are running right now saying, vote for me. So it's going to put it in people's face, they're going to see the mask, they're going to say, oh, yeah, maybe I'll throw it in my car, maybe it's an extra to put in my pocketbook or whatever. So I don't think it hurts. I think it's a good thing for people to recognize the fact that we're going to be wearing masks for a little bit of time. And again, if we if we are courteous to our neighbors and we make sure that in situations where we can't socially distance, that we wear these masks, I think it's going to help flatten the curve.
Yeah, agreed. Another question here, and you kind of touched on it in in the beginning when you were just talking about about data, but when when you think about sort of loosening some of the restrictions, what what are the critical metrics that you look at? You talked about the percent positive. Is it just that? Is it a combination of that and the capacity in the hospitals or unfortunately the death count? Is it all of that or are you putting any extra weight in one of those or the other when you think about the decision to to say, all right, well, we can now go into phase two or phase X, and that'll allow for, you know, more capacity in a restaurant or a retail, et cetera?
I mean, look, we're we're looking at all the metrics. And as I said to you, I look at the the total number, which is the number that the newspapers and the TV uses every night, you know, 12,000 new cases, 13,000 new cases, 15,000 new cases. That's the number that I am less concerned about than the number of deaths, the number of people in the ICU, the number of hospital beds. Now, the number that I wish I had more confidence in is that percentage, the percentage of positives over the total number of tests being given. But there are certain vagaries in that. Number one, we've seen that there are a number of test sites and over 100 in Palm Beach County that are 100% positive results being reported. But we know that's not possible. So what's obviously happening is they're not reporting the negatives. Well, if we don't have a right denominator, then the ratio is going to be wrong. And so if the number, if the ratio is is being artificially increased because the denominator is missing all of those negative tests, then I don't know how much I can count on that number. We have said that 10% was the number that we had to be under before we went to phase two. We had actually asked the the governor to go to phase two. The governor did not give us that permission. And in fact, at our last meeting, Commissioner McKinley formally requested that our that Mayor Kerner rescind our request to go to phase two, given the fact that we've gone far worse than at the time we had sent the letter. So we're going to look at the metrics. Obviously, the the key to this is, and but the key to it is not having people die. I mean, that's the ultimate answer. But unfortunately, you don't know how many people are going to die until a month or so after they've tested positive because we're going through the life cycle of this disease. They get the complication, they wind up in the hospital, they wind up in the ICU, they wind up on a a respirator. And so we're going through this entire cycle. So and the biggest problem also with these numbers is that they are coming to us so late after someone tests. We're finding that these tests are taking upwards of 10 to 15 days to be reported. Now, there are some labs that are reporting them within 48 hours. But if we're going to do contact tracing, which all that means is that we're going to call people that you were in contact with before you were told that you were a positive test and tell them, look, you were with Troy, you had lunch with him yesterday, Troy has just tested positive, you need to watch for your symptoms, and if you're feeling, you know, that you're having these symptoms, you need to go get tested. So if that was all working well and people were getting their tests back soon and we could have confidence in the test and we were getting all the data and it wasn't being dumped at, you know, at a, all of a sudden, someone dumps a week's worth of data on one day and we don't know when that data came from, I mean, all these things make it very difficult to drive this bus. But we're we're trying to drive it as as steadily as we can.
I'm going to, we we get just one more, I mean, I'm going to ask one more question and and let you go, Vice Mayor. But the question was, is there somewhere that we can see infection fatality rates?
I think, and I think the the dashboard has the number for COVID deaths, for COVID. Now, remember, and and, you know, someone's going to say this to you, if someone comes in with heart failure and then they have COVID and they die, they're going to code it as COVID. Now, we both know that person was at some point going to succumb to the heart failure or someone who's stage four cancer, you know, they are going to succumb to that disease at some point. This is certainly, and and everybody deserves every day they deserve.
Right.
But on the other hand, you know, we have to, you know, know those numbers are not great. Before you let me go.
Yes.
One last thing, my final PSA.
Yeah.
It's the census, please, census, 2020census.org. If you haven't done it yet, please, 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 only 60% of our residents in Palm Beach County have answered the census. That means over 600,000 have not answered. We're going to get money from the feds, we're going to probably get a couple more seats in Congress, but all of that's predicated on the census. Please respond to the census. Thank you, Troy.
That's a great way to end.
I have a quick comment before we end, sorry.
Yeah.
We know that our vice mayor is a major social media guy. So I would like to take a screenshot with our vice mayor and all of the people that are on here so I can send it to him and he could post it to social. So if everybody could turn on their cameras, that would be awesome.
And while and while you're doing that, while you're turning on your your cameras, I just wanted to respond to Vice Mayor's plea for the census. You all know that I send out a CEO message every Tuesday and Friday morning. One came out today and it had, in fact, information about the census, Vice Mayor encouraging everyone and how and how to do just that because it is critically important. I hope that you all read my CEO message every Tuesday and Friday morning. We try to put in as much relevant, critical, pertinent information to help you in your business. And we put all of these virtual experiences in there as well so you can keep your calendar organized. And I also want to let you know that if you're not on Vice Mayor Weinroth's email, that's also an excellent source of information as well, to see if you can get that sent to your email. It's just great information to keep us up to speed on on what's going on in our in our unique times that we have right now. So with that, before Chastity takes her screenshot, I just want to say thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth, again for your time. Thank you for your leadership. We don't do not know what it's like to be in your shoes. We're glad you're in them. We appreciate everything you're doing. We want you to go and enjoy that beach in a few minutes after we take the shot. Thanks to everybody joining us today. We had a good group today, very much appreciate that. Continue to communicate with us. Let us know the things that you like that we're doing. Let us know the things that you don't like that we're doing as well so we can stop doing that. But again, we're still all in this together. We got, I think we're going to be in it a little while longer together. But listen, wash your hands, wear your mask, watch your distance, everybody be safe out there. Now smile pretty with your video on for Destiny for the Cam.
Sit on top, hands up. Look at your camera, and I'm going to do two. Okay, one, two, three, say cheese. Hold on, I'll do one more. Little process here. Okay, one, two, three, smile. Thank you.
Chastity, have a great rest of the day.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. It's great.